This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by
The Committee to Re-Elect Laura Shure Blaney for Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Laura Blaney, your Porter County District One Commissioner. I'm currently running for reelection. And while we've accomplished a lot of things over the last eight years, there's always more work to be done. I would love to be a part of the team that finishes up the projects we've started and continues to make Porter County an even better place to live. I hope you will please consider voting for me on or before November 3rd. I would certainly appreciate it. This message was approved by and paid for by the Committee Blaney for Commissioner. Thank you.
The Bill and Kelly Show is recorded at Studio A at Executive Suite Squared in beautiful Hammond, Indiana. Now here's Bill and Kelly. Hello and welcome to the Bill and Kelly Show. Today, our guest is Laura Shure Blaney, who is running for reelection as the Porter County Commissioner for District One, which is the South District. And so she's going to be telling us a bit about first what she's done so far as a Commissioner and give us some background about herself and tell us about her campaign. So Laura, welcome to our show.
Morning Bill.
Morning.
Good morning, everyone. I guess it won't be morning when they see this.
No.
Already saying silly thing.
This in the morning, so boy, proud to have you on the show. You've been involved, gosh, in Porter County government since I moved back to Porter County. So it's been ages.
2002.
Wow, yeah, yeah. And so what I'd like you to do, if you could just share with some of our guests, because Porter County is growing even during the pandemic. People are moving in and so there may be some people, although your family is very famous in Porter County, there's some people moving over that may not be familiar with you or your family. So why don't you tell us a bit about yourself and tell us how you got involved in Porter County government?
Absolutely. I'm Laura Blaney. I've been married to my husband Ken for 26 years. We have four children together. We reside in Porter Township, which is our house that we built is on property that belonged to my grandparents. So there's a big family history out here. A lot of our neighbors are relatives and that's pretty neat. We are very vested in this area and just love it here. We're kind of in the boonies, but we're still 50 miles away from Chicago, which is just a beautiful thing. We couldn't be happier to be living in Porter County. We have, we're small business owners. We've run a restaurant for several years that we've now sold it a few years ago. Kids are busy, keep us happy. I originally got involved in politics because when we bought our place out here, we found out about three weeks before we were moving in that a company was trying to set, site a landfill right across the street from our new home on property land. And of course, that was kind of a shock to the system and not something we wanted to see happen. So we got involved with the neighbors and formed an activist group and we actually did prevent the landfill from siding here. It really didn't make sense. There's no highways out here. It's kind of in the middle of nowhere without any infrastructure to support it. But that got me involved in realizing, hey, you know, I didn't see this coming. I had no idea that what the needs are in the county or who's involved or how you even go about finding out what's happening in the county. So I started paying attention and then the Democrat Party, the current council seat holder for our district was elected Commissioner and that seat opened up in the middle of her term. And I was asked if I'd be willing to go to caucus and I was voted in via caucus to that seat. So I served for a couple of years and I had small kids, so I took a couple of years off, but I kept wanting to get involved again. So I came back and ended up with a total of six years on the council. And I'm finishing up my eighth year as a Commissioner. So that's, that's the history that got me here. What we've accomplished as I've been a Commissioner, I'm part of just a fantastic team. There's three of us and we're from different parties. But once we walk through the door, that really doesn't matter. We look for our common ground and work really hard to solve the issues that are in that common area. And there are plenty to work on. So I think the biggest thing that we've done during my time that kind of set the stage for all of our other accomplishments was forming the foundation, the Porter County Foundation. We sold the hospital in 2007 and the money was only bringing in not even quite a million dollars a year. And it was $150 million. So it just, you know, we just wanted to do more. We worked with our local legislators, both parties. And I actually went down and testified for the legislation along with another council person. And our legislators got it through and we came up and the 10 of us, the council and commissioners, put it, put all of our money into the foundation. And boy, it's, it's just provided so many resources for the county. I can't say enough about what a good thing that turned out to be. And it would have never happened without teamwork. There were so many pieces and parts. It was a big undertaking and it's been hugely beneficial. So the money that we've received from that has allowed us to do all kinds of projects without a tax rate increase, which is just huge because that's kind of the basis for everything too. I don't know if you want me to get into some of these projects that we've done right now or you want to wait and see if that comes out later?
Let me circle back to those because that is very important. I want people to know the Porter County Foundation had, boy, and you're the president right now, right?
Yep, yep.
And so it is this foundation, as you said, that was created that serves a lot of purposes. It goes to support people that are needy in the area, projects that are used to help support the communities and also support Porter County government, especially in cases like this where we have a pandemic, where we really do need to continue on, on some of these projects that we'll talk about to keep things going and keep things repaired. So it's a wonderful thing, I think, where people are having to go back to creating tax levies and so on. You haven't been able, you haven't had to do that because of the foundation. So that's, that's good to know and that's teamwork, really.
Yeah.
So one of the things, this kind of dovetails right in is the budget. And then we'll go back and circle back and talk about more of the foundation and how it's helped out with the budget. But if you can go through and talk to us a bit about as the Commissioner, dealing with forming the budget and the budgetary process and specifically how the pandemic has really played on that budget, not what you've done to overcome that.
Right, well, the council obviously is a fiscal body, so they do the whole budget. But the Commissioners have a nice big chunk that we have to work with. And we were able to keep almost everything pretty flat. The council did decide to do raises countywide, kind of cost of living type of thing. Our one big addition was we added a deputy to the IT department. We haven't had a deputy. The IT department is, it's been kind of a, we've had to bring it along because it started off as a smaller, there wasn't a whole lot of IT going on to now. It's the backbone of every department. Everything is, is technology and everything's on computers. And it, the efficiency afforded by a strong IT is just, you know, priceless. So, and on top of that, our new, we have a new director. Our longtime director retired this past year. And he, our new guy is a specialist, Eric Serrano is his name. He's a specialist in security, which is really important. Both Lake County and La Porte Counties have had unfortunate experience of being hacked and tried, held ransom pretty much. And it really has been bad for them. And we've been lucky so far and we've got this new guy coming in and he specializes in that. And wants some more time to be able to address it. So that to me was definitely worthwhile addition to our budget and will probably end up saving us money down the road. As far as the impacts from COVID, the way that it's really taken a hit on the income tax. Fortunately for us, we have one of the lowest income tax rates in the entire state, but it's still money we depend on. The way that that money comes in, it's in kind of behind. So we're really going to feel the impacts in 2022. Another thing luckily for us with the budgeting process, we've managed to save a lot of money through various efficiencies that I hope we can talk about as we go on here. The biggest one is probably our savings in health insurance. We've saved $6.5 million annually and that's money that the council has really managed to budget well and, and save too. So moving into 2021, we're going to have about a $5 million cushion in our general fund. And then we also have a rainy day fund with the foundation that maybe we can talk about more later, that's around $7 million. So we're in pretty good shape right now. We're, we're keeping everything as, you know, we're toeing the line and we have that to lean back on when we get to the troubled waters. So I am cautiously optimistic that we, we probably will not have to cut any services or raise taxes if things go the way we're expecting.
Right, barring any unforeseen circumstances. You know, this is 2020.
Yeah, I know, that's why I gave a little disclaimer there, but
Yeah.
We couldn't be in better shape for this, this problem though.
Right, yeah, and that is a good shape. And again, that attributed to the teamwork that has been done by both the council and the Commissioners working together and all hands on deck, basically. So as we move on, one of the things that I think that goes to support that budget and you can ignore is the economic development. We can always say, oh gosh, we're in a pandemic, that, that's not going to happen. But that is not the case in Porter County. Economic development continued. And we were talking before the show, as we look out our door, they're digging a new foundation in this subdivision every couple of days. So, and they wouldn't be doing it unless they're sure that these places were sold. And sure enough, they're, they're, so housing is happening. Can you speak to thus on what you feel the role is as a Commissioner to help support that? Make sure, because it is vital to, because so suppose that somehow the foundation isn't there. Economic development always promotes the tax base that is there, both in from business and from property, personal property taxes. So can you talk to us about what you're doing, what eyes you have open on, on continuing that trend of economic development?
Absolutely. I think one of the most important things that is kind of the bedrock of all of it that gets overlooked because it's not an action and it's just having low taxes, efficient government, transparent government, a government that people trust, that attracts people to move into the area, especially with this residential growth. Nobody wants to move to an area where they feel like they don't know where their tax dollars are going and they can't trust their politicians and things just are uncertain in that arena. I think we've done a great job with that. Like I said before, we've got one of the lowest, second lowest tax rate in the state as far as income tax. And another thing we don't talk about often, that's a boon for people moving in, is that 37% of that money goes towards homestead credits, which offset your property taxes. So that's also a big draw for people that are looking for lower taxes. And let's face it, a lot of the people that are coming here, that's what they're looking for. We've also got an active redevelopment commission. They are looking at the unincorporated part of US Highway 6. We're looking to do an overlay there that will kind of direct commercial growth and make sure it's orderly and appropriate. We're looking forward to get moving on that. We've got the Willow Creek Extension that maybe we'll talk about more later, but that should open up a nice north-south quarter on the west side of the county that should also open up some more area for commercial or residential growth. So we're, we're actively paying attention. Workforce is important. We're an active member of Workforce One and they do a great job connecting employers with employees and making sure training is available that is needed for the employees. So the employers have the people they need and are willing to come here. As far as actually going out and recruiting companies, that tends to be more cities and towns because they have the infrastructure right there, sewer, water, utilities. But we are definitely doing our part to make this a desirable place to come.
Right, and for those who are not familiar with the area, when Commissioner Blaney referred to as the Willow Creek Extension, there are two major population areas in Porter County. The hub of Porter County, which is Valparaiso and Portage. And there's this major road that runs through Portage, Willow Creek, that goes out south of Route 6 that outside of some medical facilities is pretty much undeveloped. It's still farmland and it's pretty much ripe. But yeah, we do have a traffic problem. And so we're looking at that as a means of alleviating both traffic, but it's, it's really a double benefit because when we start developing that road, businesses should and residential areas should start populating that area, which is great. And it's, because for those who are familiar with that area, it is pretty undeveloped right now. And, but if you go through Valparaiso, you get the sense, oh my goodness. Yeah, we, we do need some type of alleviation. So I just want to make sure people are clear on that. So let's talk about another thing within the budget that greatly impacts the budget. In fact, it is probably the largest budget item in the county and that's staffing. I know that you guys have been vigilant and talked about some of the things that you're doing to minimize that expenditure. Can you talk to us about what the Commissioners are doing to oversee that process?
I think the biggest thing with staffing is technology. We have really become cutting edge. We do whatever we can to bring in the most efficient and cost-effective means for people to do their jobs. And so we haven't grown as much as the population has because everybody can do more with less. We have new websites that we've put out. The main one for the Porter County website is almost a year old. That one has great mobile capabilities. In the past, you could get on there with your phone and, you know, half of it was falling off the edge and you couldn't read all the text. But now it's really, everything is set up to be mobile and that's been a huge boon. We have some other websites for our various departments, Expo Center, the Opera House, Planning Department, so you can, and they're all linked. So you can easily get all the resources you need. Somebody doesn't have to answer the phone for every single question. You can get home from work at 8 o'clock or 10 o'clock at night if you're a restaurant employee or something and get online and fill out your form or ask your question. You can do it right then and there and it's just very efficient. That's all the real obvious stuff. One thing that's not quite as obvious, it's kind of exciting. In our stormwater department, we bought a drone and we used to have to go out in the ditches because down in the more rural areas that are farmed, their drainage is a huge issue and we've got ditches everywhere that we have to maintain. And we would have to send teams of people out to walk the ditches and, you know, mark all the topography and, and it was really time consuming. And some of the areas were very hard to get to, to reach because of overgrowth and trees and the whole nine yards. Now we can fly this drone over and we can do several miles in a day. And it, we have a video, if anybody's interested, on our website and it's just so cool. You can, it does the whole topography. You can go from every angle. You can go high, you can go low and, you know, just one, they all probably fight over who's going to fly it because it's also fun. But it's just really saved us on manpower and hours of work.
That is reassuring to hear that there, that people are understanding that that's what technology is for. Why would you, as a toy, but it, and if we're too old is because as long as we're in this pandemic, technology plays a crucial communication tool, which I'm glad to hear your IT guy is starting to boost up the infrastructure because it's needed. You know, until we get out of this, people are going to be on the Zoom machine communicating with each other, so.
Well, and as you're talking about COVID, we were one of the first in the state to do our own county dashboard and we've had almost a million views of the dashboard since the beginning of March. And it has also led to increases and, you know, once people come for that and then they go all over our website, our website traffic is up almost 400% from the year before. So I'm really glad we kept going on that before the pandemic hit because it just turned out to be so important.
By the way, Laura, I just want to let our listeners know Kelly just popped her head in here. You can guess what Kelly is doing right now, although it's kind of a bit different. It has to do with the government.
Right now?
Right now.
Getting coffee?
Well, for instance, that right on the head because she is the coffee queen. But she's going down to the court or to the government building to apply for her homestead exemption.
Ah, I would not have guessed that.
There you go. Well, anyway, I thought I'd get that. Kelly says hi.
Tell her hello.
Yes. Man, so, so that's reassuring because it is something that optimizes and keeps government working efficiently because labor is a key factor in the budget. I mean, don't get it under control, that it could eat up your entire budget. So is there any other, how you monitoring departments when they ask for resources? Are you mentoring them in any shape or form?
Absolutely. One of the things I'm most proud of is my time as a Commissioner. We have hired just some fantastic department heads. They're forward-thinking, they're, they're motivated, they're innovative. And when you have those good people, it really makes my job a lot easier. And they come to us, we meet with them regularly and go over where they're headed and we give them our ideas, the other three Commissioners or the other two Commissioners and myself. And a lot of back and forth, a lot of planning and then, you know, just coming back in and making sure we're on the right track, right path. And it's, it's been a very dynamic, the culture is really good right now. I think people want to come to work. I think it's exciting because we're getting things done. And COVID, of course, kind of put a little bit of brakes on. Everybody started working from home, but we really didn't shut down. We shut our building for a while. We were the first ones to open it back up, but we, all the highway guys kept working on the roads. They were outside. We managed to work remotely, which is a technology thing, and we kept the ball rolling. So without this great staff, we wouldn't have been able to do that.
And so, yeah, I, I think that's been good because, you know, trying to use technology, like you said, and, and as a tool, especially during COVID. Now, one of the things that we like to talk about is the infrastructure because with COVID, you know, it's had a catastrophic effect. And we've already talked about the foundation and how it's helped. Do you want to bring up some projects specifically that have been a highlight during this time? Some of the projects that you're, you're able to utilize, maybe some of the funding from the foundation along with capital projects?
Absolutely. This would, none of this would have been possible without the foundation money. We've got, we remodeled and brought up to code the courthouse in Valpo, the North County complex, which is the courthouse. And we actually were able to build a new building there where the Porter Township Assessor resides and the, hmm, not sure what's happening right now. Are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Sorry about that.
It said Zoom, just blame it on Zoom.
It's Zoom's fault.
Yeah.
I'll have to get my IT guy to straighten me out.
Just blame it on Zoom, not the IT guy.
Well, it's not his fault, it would be mine. He needs to help me.
I manage an IT department at Valpo School, so I sympathize with everything he's doing right now.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yes, it is.
So anyway, we were able to partner with the Portage Township Trustee and the Portage Township Food Pantry and, and combine expenses and build this building together rather than all three of us doing separate buildings. And that kept costs down and that's just been a great synergy over there. We remodeled the Expo Center, which was very tired and desperate need. It's, it's a great place. It's a good draw to bring people into our area, but it, it was in dire need of some freshening up, to put it mildly. We redid the front of the administration building and we bought the building at 157 Franklin Street that we are moving 911 to and modernizing that facility as well as pulling a lot of offices out of the courthouse. That's an old historic gorgeous building, but the load on it was just so high. So this is just going to lighten the load there. And, and then went back to staffing a little bit. We created a facilities department, which we didn't have before. So we're going to be able to do the ongoing maintenance required to keep these buildings where they need to be and so we don't end up with this problem again. We had only one guy doing facilities before and that led to something you brought up earlier, maybe before we got online here, about outside contracting. We had to hire outside contractors for everything and it was, you know, run till it breaks and then call an outside contractor to fix it. And of course, that's the most expensive way to do anything. So now we have a team, we've got our own on-staff plumbing expert, we've got electric, we've got HVAC and they're doing ongoing maintenance and then they're available as soon as we need them when there is a problem. And boy, has that just worked out great.
Yeah, that is, because I, one of the things, if you can't maintain the equipment, your expenses are going to climb eventually.
Exactly.
That's, well, got a handle on that and identified that you need to have a staff taking care of all those areas. So let's see, we're at, now we've covered infrastructure. Is there any other projects that you would like to highlight? I know the, the courthouse is been a, there's been a couple of you shared pictures of the kind of which is, boy, I tell you, there's been some nice changes.
It's just such a beautiful building and it was very basic as far as tuck pointing and new windows. And, you know, it wasn't the exciting remodel stuff you might think of if you're into design, but it just made this building ready to last the next 50 years. It's, it's a beautiful building. We made the outside area a little more user-friendly, I think. Valpo put some parking in at the same time in the front, which was well-needed downtown. And so we were able to work together with them for that. We had to take down a couple of trees, which, you know, not everybody was real happy about that. But one of the reasons we had to do that was for the parking and for the judges, they didn't have secured lot. And the way the world is today, that just really wasn't okay. So now they have a fenced, secured lot and I think that's really important. You know, the funny thing for me, probably the scariest moment I had was I picked out the color for the windows. And I thought, oh no, if I screw this up, it's just going to be forever. Everybody's going to, that's what I'm going to be remembered for. But I think it looks fine. I think it looks great. And it, yeah, it's been, it's been fun to see all these things. We've done a lot of ribbon cuttings.
Yeah.
It's really gratifying because at the beginning it seemed a bit overwhelming.
Yeah, and now we move into that and that, that's some great work. But I'd be negligent if I didn't bring up this next issue because it's been plaguing Porter County for decades. And a lot of, and the thing about it is a lot of people still don't know it's Porter County's largest problem that we have. County's largest problem that we have. All hands are decked in combating it. And that's the substance abuse problem that exists in Porter County. One of the things about having such a vibrant county and a heart of the county in Valparaiso, is that it brings in people with money. The downside, then this happens in other areas, it's just not unique to Porter County. When you have that, you end up with another problem eventually, and that's substance abuse. Unfortunately, Porter County's had the problem of having a, one of the largest per capita drug overdose deaths in the state and in the region. So can you speak to us about that as a commissioner and how you go to support and work with the council members as they work to support those different departments, as the sheriff and the prosecutor's office?
Well, absolutely. And as you said, the sheriff's department, they're the ones dealing directly with a lot of the people that are struggling with substance abuse issues and the judicial system as well. So we really like to support their efforts. We've got the undercover drug unit that is, has been a great regional effort. The heroin overdose response team, which has been great. They come in and they're focused on getting to the dealers. You know, they're not just looking at this one, you know, unfortunate situation. They're, they're trying to get to the root of it so they can stop it. Inside the jail, the sheriff has put some programs in. We've got the GodPod, which is really helpful for a lot of inmates. The recidivism numbers there are much better than they are with the general population. And, you know, we've got various courts that are dedicated to helping solve this problem. And it's like you said, all hands on deck, really support the efforts that people are making in the county. We've got the Porter County Substance Abuse Council. You know, annually, we approve their budget of the money that they're putting out to agencies that are working on this problem as well.
And it is a difficult problem. And I, and you have, and I want to go by saying is that we have one of the, it's kind of hard for me not to be a cheerleader in this interview process, kind of bridging where I should be. But, you know, I've got to say, Sheriff Reynolds has earned recognition nationwide. He sits on several committees through, in Washington, and gets called down to Indianapolis quite often to talk about how we're dealing with the problem. And he's been placed in a difficult situation. But he, as you said, he's got remarkable programs in the jail that he had to develop out of necessity and with, between him and, and Berkey, who is the chaplain, have put together some, and, and we also have a national award-winning chaplain, who was just awarded just recently. And so, yeah, the problem is being taken care of, but it's disheartening. But there's a lot, we're, we're working cooperatively up on our stand, talking to sheriff with law enforcement out of Chicago, where a lot of the drugs are coming from. And so it's a difficult problem. But it is good to hear that, and get your input as a commissioner on where that problem is. And I guess as we draw towards the end of the show, if we could just have you talk about, if you put yourself in a voter's position right now. And, and there is one thing I do want to circle back to before we do that. You know, one of the things that was kind of refreshing because it got you involved in Porter County government. And if you wanted to spend some time about that as well, you got involved because a landfill was moving near your house. And you decided to get up and do something about it. And fast forward a couple of years, you're, you're commissioner and you're definitely doing something about it. But, you know, one of the problems and, and that you ran into that, whereas back then, that I'd like you to speak to, is the, with growth, you end up with quality of construction. You know, and making sure the contractors are doing quality work and just not digging holes in the ground and putting two-by-fours up to get people moved in so they can get a check. So can you, and that is a part of the commissioner's responsibility. Can you speak to how you're overseeing that and this big growth that's going on in Porter County, even during COVID? What measures are you all putting in place to make sure that these contractors are doing their job?
Well, I'm going to start with a little story. One of my first weeks in office, eight years ago, I met with some of the people in the planning department. And on the drainage board, I was on the drainage board right away. That was before we had stormwater department. And the concern was there was flooding in homes. And there were two retention ponds in the subdivision where the flooding was occurring. And we realized they had never been hooked up to anything. They were just kind of holes in the ground. And I said, well, how did this happen? And they said, well, their plans showed that they would be connected. And, you know, and I said, well, what happened when we inspected them? And the room got quiet. And I said, you know, did nobody go out there? And they said, well, we don't have any inspectors. I said, what? We don't have any inspectors right now? And no, we didn't have any inspectors at that time for, for that. We had some inspectors for other things, for building codes and so forth. But we were reviewing plans and making sure everybody had good plans. But then we weren't going out to make sure that they were followed through on. And some of it was a funding issue. But it ended up costing us more money. Actually, probably all of it was a funding issue. But it did end up, it costs way more money down the line when we have to go back in and fix it, when the county shouldn't have had to pay for it ever. So we have inspectors now. And we have some enhanced codes. And we have a great team that, you know, when you put in a plan, there's a pretty clear process. And that's all communicated online. And the plans go from, you know, each department that needs to look at them. And we've also streamlined that. So hopefully, it's easier for developers as well. Because we're not trying to throw up roadblocks in front of development. That's not the point of this at all. We just want it done right. So more people want to come. And we're not going back and trying to fix everything 20, 30, 40 years later. Out in South Haven, where we're doing $20 million worth of drainage work, you know, we found a whole lot of things weren't done up to snuff there. And it, it, boy, it's, it's expensive. We're spending $20 million, but we're doing it right this time. So next time we get 75, 50, 75 years down the road, I think they're going to be a little happier with us.
Yeah. Well, I had to ask that question, but it is good to know that this is your call of duty because this is what you.
Absolutely.
So ending up the show, I think it'd be good if you could put yourself in a voter's shoes right now. A lot of them have voted early because of this election cycle, but there's a good number that still haven't.
I still haven't.
Get out there.
Yeah.
Make a plan to vote, Laura. So now, if you can put yourself in the voter's shoes and tell us a bit about yourself, particularly your values as a person, why they should vote for you to retain your seat as a commissioner?
Yeah, I think my experience is really probably key is we're moving into this COVID crisis, potential crisis. We're in a good position, like I mentioned. But as you mentioned, it's 2020. And who knows what can hit us? I've dealt with some other crises, county crises in the past, the election debacle a few years ago that nobody really wants to think about. I worked with the other commissioner, mostly, mostly the North County Commissioner because the center commissioner was on the ballot. So he couldn't really get that much involved. And I think we did a good job keeping the, you know, the bus on the tracks and working through that crisis. As the pandemic hit, I think we did a good job getting information out to everybody so they could make their own decisions and feel confident about what county government was doing. I've been here my whole life. I love my job. I love local government because it really isn't all that political. You pick a party based on your core values. And, you know, you get into office and you leave that at the door. And the team we have right now, they pretty much all leave it at the door. We rib each other from time to time about political issues. But there's so much to get done that we can all agree on. And I think I've shown that I'm a problem solver. I'm a team player. And I want to keep working with my team. And I would just be very grateful to be able to continue for another four years. And I think we've shown, we get things done. We've, we've really gotten a lot done.
Yeah. And it's one of those counties where it's kind of refreshing to see things keep moving. And, you know, and it's one of the things, it's nice to live in an area where you have commissioners and council members that are not using COVID as an excuse not to do things. Things are still happening at a, at a feverish pace. But yet, people are staying safe. And it shows by the dashboard that you created. It keeps people mindful that we still got work to do and we all have to keep each other safe. So that's.
It's another all hands on deck thing.
Yeah.
Everyone's got to do their part.
Yeah. Can't wait for 2020 to be over. Boy.
I'm happy for November 3rd to be over right now.
I think, is talking about stress. Ah, boy. Well, this has been absolutely wonderful. And it's, it's such an honor to have you on our show because you're years of service to Porter County. And we just are so appreciative of it. And is there any parting words that you'd like to say other than, where's Kelly and why isn't she on?
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you. There, this campaign year has been really odd. There aren't as many opportunities to get our messages out. And this is great. I'm glad. I've watched the other interviews that you've done. And it's helped me figure out who I'm going to vote for. And if anyone has any questions or wonders what they want to see it in writing, what I've been doing as a commissioner, I have a website, laurashureblaney.com. You're welcome to check it out. I've got a Blaney for Commissioner Facebook page. And no matter who you're going to vote for, please go vote. It's such an important part of the process. And just, thank you, Bill. I appreciate being on your show.
Well, thank you for your years of service. And it's definitely appreciated from a Porter County resident to you. It's very much appreciated. And we wish you the best luck in this election cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll stay on with that, we'll go ahead and wrap up the show. We want to wish everyone a very safe and happy remainder of the day. We would like to thank you for listening to this. And we thought, we hope you really thought that this was helpful. And, and your decision-making before you enter that booth and before you make out your ballot, whatever it may be. But please, please, it's more important than any other time. Please get that vote in and let your message be heard. My dad always used to, as a Lake County politician from years of service, so you really can't complain unless you vote. And I'll leave it at that. With that, we'll say goodbye, everybody. Have a good day. Bye for now.
This episode of the Bill and Kelly Show is brought to you by The Committee to Re-Elect Laura Shure Blaney for Commissioner.
Hi, I'm Laura Blaney, your Porter County District One Commissioner. I'm currently running for reelection. And while we've accomplished a lot of things over the last eight years, there's always more work to be done. I would love to be a part of the team that finishes up the projects we've started and continues to make Porter County an even better place to live. I hope you will please consider voting for me on or before November 3rd. I would certainly appreciate it. This message was approved by and paid for by the committee Blaney for Commissioner. Thank you.